All right. I think I'll just call this thing to informal order here. We don't have a quorum yet, but let's start with our usual introductions and get started. Arda, you want to start for us, please?
Good morning. I'm Arda, the comptroller.
Andrew Grandin, the VP of Analytics.
Kathy Celesto, Senior Vice President of Operations.
How much is your walkout distance from one thing?
Morning, Eric Gillis, the VP of Rollin' Man.
Hi.
Thank you.
Angelus Morrison, VP of Marketing Communications.
Cameron.
Student trustee Cameron Lloyd.
Candace Morrison, trustee.
I am the guy president.
Jeff Stone, trustee.
Karen Crowley, trustee.
Yeah, Grace, your assistant down there.
Bob Tramone, PT.
Ryan Noble, PT.
All right. Small, intimate group today. Do we have anyone online yet, Bob?
Um, no, it is supposed to be online. It kind of went.
All right. We will wait to formally convene the meeting until we have a quorum. We have four and we need six. So we'll see exactly who comes. In the meantime, I will give my chair a report. And it's fairly brief this month. School has started, which is great. Our last meeting of the Board of Trustees was August 29th. I've attended my usual litany of community events and political events and so forth, just trying to show the flag for SUNY Erie at various places, being in conversations around town. And that's been ongoing. On September 9th, Dr. Segai and I had our monthly meeting at the Rath Building with the county executive, his chief of staff, and other officials. That's just, again, a pattern that we've taken up for the last couple of years of staying in good communication with our county partners. On the 19th of September was the scholarship luncheon, and unfortunately, I was not able to be there. But I understand it was a very, you know, well-intended event. I do like to normally make that. Hi, Amanda. But I was out of town. And then, of course, the largest news, I guess from my perspective this week, was, of course, Monday, the inauguration of Dr. Segai, or formal inauguration, vestigature as our president, which was a spectacular event at North Campus. The reception that followed was just lovely. Our culinary folks did an incredible job putting that party on. It was the best restaurant in town.
That's right. That's right.
People were raving about the food, and I said, "I wish you could take all this home."
That's right. That's right. We did give some to go as well.
And afterwards, I was able to, you know, attend the Bills game at the night with the chancellor. So that was a good chance for trustee Lewin and the chancellor and I to spend some time together and talk about Erie Community College.
And they won. That's even the best, right?
The best Bills game ever.
I was going to say, I don't know if you call that really watching. More like blowing out a team.
John King had never been to a Bills game, and he said, "Is it like this every time?" Not always, but we've been this way.
A great quarterback once said, "When the players aren't playing for the stats, it will be."
And we'll have more on inauguration when Adyem speaks, but that was just a wonderful event and a great day. And then, just a pitch to keep in mind, the Foundation's gala, which is coming up on November 7th. Eileen and I bought our tickets yesterday, and I would just point out, for those who are able to plan ahead, you can get discount tickets, save a few dollars on your ticket to go to that event on November 7th. The Thursday would be the second annual gala put on by the Foundation. So that's all I had for my chair report. Colleen Quinn, I see you joined us, and I know you've got a class this morning. While we gain our quorum, would you mind giving the student senate report, and we'll make sure that you get taken care of before you have to leave? You on there, Colleen? Well, we'll wait for Colleen to come back. We're still one short on a quorum, so--
No, fine. Thank you very much.
Dr. Segai, why don't you give us your report? Shall I? Can you?
Sure. Sure. Absolutely. So to Jeff's point, a lot of the things that Jeff mentioned, I participated as well with him, so a lot of community meetings. But I think the biggest focus for me and for our team has been getting ready for the inauguration. I tell you, the planning of it, and first and most, I want to thank our team led by Gail, Bob, and the rest of the other team that were there to really make this happen. It was a small committee, but the committee did an outstanding job to do this. And they've been doing it for almost two months, Bob, roughly, from being here on a Saturday and Sunday all day. I don't know if that Bob or Gail slept and the other team as well, but they've been here. So really, thank you so much for really taking it in on and really doing the work that you have. Again, to Jeff's point, there was a lot of people who participate, but our culinary, they show up over and over again. As you know, the Joan Boza event, they did the same thing. And it's our students, it's our faculty, but it's really the perfectionist of what they do for me. I didn't get the chance to eat at the beginning, but I took a lot home, so I've been eating the food. And so they did, they did make a point. We all decided and agreed, and rightfully so, not to have alcohol. And so, but they did make a special drink with, you know, ginger ale and pineapple, right? So I was excited to have that drink later. So, and also, they did a pound cake that I love so much, and they found the recipe for the pound cake and did that. So I was able to enjoy that too. So it really, they take the time to make sure that it's personalized, but it also represents the college and the excellent work that we do. And that, I think for me, the night, the highlight, obviously, my family and both of my children, I was very proud to have them speak. You used to see both of them fighting on who's was going to speak and who was going to write, so they both contribute. But my daughter, she's the oldest, so she ordered Micah to speak. So that's how that came about. She said, "You're speaking. I'm standing next to you." But both of them contribute, so I'm very proud for them to speak. And I didn't see it. They said, "No, we will surprise you." So I was a little bit like, "What are they going to say?" But certainly very proud and spoke from the heart. I think the highlight also was it was my mom's birthday and to really, you know, memorize the memory of that and be able to share that with the entire college community. And, you know, the Western New York was just humbling. The other thing, I think, is really the idea of us representing our students, right? Making sure that our students-- so they told me we were going to have about 100 students. I think we reached to that 100 students. So you saw our students represented there, and it's really about them, right? Yes, certainly, I take pride in me being represented, but it's really about the students. And most importantly with that is our faculty and staff that were there, both on stage as well as in the audience, to really support and move forward in the union leadership, the senate leadership, knowing and making a really symbolic, and with our Board of Trustees, that this is a team effort. This is not a one individual effort that's going to run the college or get the college to be successful. So I appreciate and thank all the ones that were there. And then, it's our community partners, right? From our public officials to our business partners, our education partners. We had a wide of representation in the audience to really support the college. So that also reinforced for me that the community depends on us, and the community is really supporting the college, and wants the college genuinely to be successful. And that's really a big thing. And so I think, led by Scott Buehler, reinforced by Scott Buehler, that, you know, this is important, that this college and what we do day in and day out is important, not just for us, but also for the wider community. And then, lastly, is, you know, the representation from SUNY. Our chancellor talking about the reality of what this means, and I appreciate and respect the chancellor. I've numerous times met with him one-on-one, and he's true to what he says in terms of, they've been very, and he particularly, have been very instrumental in supporting the college and really putting resources to really support, but also asking everyone that this journey is about all of us and really, you know, coming out and, you know, publicly saying to folks that, you know, "We need your help, and you need to be part of this." And so really giving everyone, remember, he gave everyone a homework, right? And that, that's the true educator, is that we really have to really work together. So I appreciate it that. So I hope I didn't forget anyone, and certainly my senior leaders team here as well. Without them, really, this cannot happen, but so thank you. I feel like I'm at the Oscar, you know, like you're all here sitting there, and you're like, "Who else did I forget?" So, but I am certainly grateful on that. But I, you know, also would invite maybe the trustees to comment on, for those of you that were there. I know Carmen, you couldn't be there, but that's okay. But certainly would open it up for the trustees to comment on the event.
I think it was a fabulous event. The ceremony came off very well. A lot of good stuff. And the reception was a five-star reception. It was incredible.
Yes.
Both in the preparation, the food that they served, the serving, cleaning up after things, they were just great. Everything went like clockwork.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
And the staff, I know Gail and others have worked very, very hard on that, and we appreciate that very much because it wouldn't have come together without all their hours into that.
Yes.
It's very impressive. Amanda?
Yeah, I thought the event was fantastic. Very high energy. It shows how you've brought together internal and external support. And, I mean, I know you probably don't like everyone telling you how wonderful you are, but you deserve to hear it. And it was so nice to hear all of these community members and our internal people talking about how we are just so excited. This is the right fit. We're moving forward. We're going to be doing wonderful things, and you are our leader, and I'm so, so happy about it.
I looked at one point, I turned around and just looked at all the people on the stage, and I thought it was just so impressive. Obviously, the SUNY people at the highest level, the chancellor, former education secretary. We had 10 or 12 college presidents--
College presidents. Yes, they were awesome.
--who came to support you and our efforts here, which I thought was very impressive. And people like Johanna Duncan-Poitier, who's retiring but still decided to come over and was so helpful to us on our presidential searches and so forth. It's just, it's a very positive vibe, and I would like to specifically compliment you on your State of the College address. You had a couple of tasks there you were thanking and noting the inauguration, but it was also your State of the College address, which we've talked about at this table, and I thought it came off very, very well to remind everyone, including ourselves, of exactly how many initiatives you have going with your team and what we want to help focus on, you know, as a board. So that is an annual event, and we will figure out, it'd probably be in September every year. I think you felt most comfortable with that.
Yes.
And, hi, Karen. So we will make that, you know, part of our annual menu and--
Jeff, one other thing to involve the students, both at the ceremony itself, but the dancing was--
Oh, my gosh. It's great.
The energy that was in that room was fabulous.
That reception was so, it was kind of like, I focused so much on the ceremony, I said, "Okay, I'll go to the reception," but the reception was amazing.
Yes, it was.
Really great. We have our quorum, so I will officially, and I'll give Candace a chance in a second. I'll just declare the meeting open at 9:14 officially, and we'll take a quick roll, then come to you for your comments. You want to jump right into the roll?
Sure. Melody Baker is absent. No, she's online, right?
Is Melody online? Not yet. Okay.
Okay. Ken Crowley.
She will be our seventh if she joins.
Here.
Len Lenahan. He's not online, is he? That's okay. Amanda Lau.
Here.
Candace Morrison.
Here.
Carrie Phillips here. Jeffrey Stone.
Here.
And Cameron Lloyd.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum presence, so we can conduct business. My last comment on the inauguration was, yeah, just to pick up what you said about the chancellor's speech, which I thought was quite good. He's an exceptional speaker, but the message, we should not forget, and that was to, he targeted all the people around Dr. Segai and say, you know, "This is a big team effort. We have a 90-plus million-dollar budget here. No one person can operate this place, no matter how visionary or how effective that person is." It takes everyone around the room, here, all the other board meetings, faculty, staff, political and business partners, all of them were represented, which I thought was great. And he took the opportunity to say, "You have homework, not just Dr. Segai." So let's all take that away. Candace, what do you think?
Sure. I'll run up your last comments. I thought it was an honor and a privilege to be involved with the event. It was beautiful. And like Amanda said, and we chatted, that it felt good. It just, it felt really positive. And I'm excited for you and for all of us here to take that positive energy and to keep the college forward.
So, thank you. Thank you. So that, and hopefully I didn't forget, but certainly the college presidents who really supported those individuals I work with as officer in charge, but also as a president now. And so they, I have a wonderful support on that level as well. What I'm also equally excited about is our games, our athletic games. So last week, our football, they won against Buff State. You know, I did have Dr. Bonney there, and I said, "You know, 38 to 7," you know, so we're doing good.
Did she owe you dinner or something?
Oh, she's buying me sneakers. She's buying me red sneakers because she wears orange sneakers to represent Buff State. So she, you know, took my size, shoe size, so we're going to be wearing my red sneakers and her orange. But I got to tell you, it's incredible. Kathy and I, and there was others who were at the game. And so we do have a game this weekend on Saturday at the Williamsville South High School on Main Street, that our football player, our football team is going against Hudson Valley. So--
Oh, Bill Rutter's old.
Yeah, but Bill has come in as SUNY Erie. So we talked about that.
Get him some red sneakers.
That's right. That's right. A red something, a hat, right? But, yeah, so I'm excited. But there's more. I know we gave a schedule on that, and I know Angelica and team are going to constantly send that out to the college community. I think it's important for us to support our team, our volleyball team, and there's others that are coming. So we'll make sure you get that as well. And the last thing, right after the inauguration, myself, Kathy, and Angelica went to through the Amherst Chamber, Leadership and Inspiration of Trailblazer. This is a women organization left through the chamber. I was part of a panel discussion about how leadership, how it's important for women to be part of leadership in our journey. So it was really an exciting opportunity for me. We had about 150 women from various entities within Western New York participate. It was just an incredible time to discuss the journey, particularly my journey, as being in a leadership role at the college and being the first woman to run a community college in Western New York. So I was honored to say that in front of the incredible women that were there.
That reminds me of Len Lenahan's speech. Now, Len isn't here today. He couldn't be here, but he ably handled the reception afterwards. Thank you, Len, for that. And he noted the numerous glass ceilings that you have broken with your appointment. And, of course, Len's been a fantastic trustee and a past chair, and it's great that he was able to be there and have that role. So, and I know Melody wanted very much to be there, but was out of state. So I know she sends her very best wishes, too.
Thank you.
Cameron, I know you weren't able to make it, but do you have any comments on the situation?
From what everyone else sounds like, the inauguration seemed like a really great event. I mean, I'm really happy for you, Dr. Segai. You are a great fit for the college. I do see the college, like, just superseding expectations beyond with you being president. So I guess I wish.
And thank, and thank you for the gift. I did get, I received a gift from our.
I don't know what the name of the bird is, but yes.
Sankofa.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
There still isn't though.
The student, the college put together a gift for Dr. Sagai and a little message for her. I was, if I was there, it would have been my honor to present it to you.
Thank you, thank you. It's beautiful and I'll have it next time. I'll bring it and make sure I have it.
We'll move to our action items in a moment. But Colleen Quinn, I see you're on, on screen. And, and thank you for being there Monday onstage and at the reception. And you were all over the place, so thank you for that and for your support. We, knowing that you have a class this morning, we've been doing reports. We have the president's report, the chair's report. Why don't we move to your college senate report? And then Cam, I'll come to you for student and then we'll get to our business.
I was gonna say, she's the class I actually have to leave to go to.
I know, Cameron's got a class due at ten thirty.
I gotta go.
She knows when I'm gone.
All right, Colleen.
At that turn, you better not be late. So hello, everyone. I, my schedule changed this semester. So I appreciate everyone being flexible, letting me use my access to attend. We had a retirement in the math department. So I double duty, duty this semester, a couple classes at South, a couple classes at City Campus, and then some online. So I do teach at eleven and then I speak to Cam at one o'clock for his visit. And he's doing great.
Good, good.
And, but yeah, so college senate met earlier this month. We have another meeting coming up on October eighth. And we had some committee work done over the summer that we had some updates given at the September meeting. Our academic standards committee was very busy working on different policies, procedures for our three-week roster, number attend, academic integrity. We also worked with Kathy Colecto about, with some upcoming policies that will eventually make it to the board policy committee on filibid obedience. We worked with our faculty council of community colleges on mental health awareness. And a revolution will be coming to the college senate floor most likely in October. Our artificial intelligence task force also has been meeting. And they are working to develop the policy and filibid statement regarding academic use of artificial intelligence. And then of course, the academic integrity of student usage of artificial intelligence. And then we talked about, just how to support our students at the doctor. You're making sure we're reaching out to everyone before the three-week rosters were due, which was earlier this week. Making sure our students have everything they need to be supported throughout the fall semester. We have some seven-and-a-half week courses that are going to begin at the end of October, I believe, October twenty-sixth. So we have reached out to that if perhaps they're struggling in one class now, they could drop that and then pick up a seven-and-a-half week course. Or on the whole side, students that feel like they're doing really well and are only registered for twelve hours, credit hours, maybe they would want to bump it up to fifteen credit hours to help speed along their progress at the semester. So we're, we're getting all that. And we were, myself and several of our senators were at the inauguration on Monday. It was an awesome event. And just the whole thing was wonderful. And congratulations again to Dr. Sagai for your appointment. And yeah, we're gonna be getting more business ready for the October meeting. And I'll probably have a little bit more of a report for you then.
Thanks, Colleen. And thanks to you and the other senators and faculty members who were present on Monday. It was great to see the students, the faculty, the staff and all, everyone there, all in one place celebrating that event. So thanks for your comments.
Of course.
Are you all set, Colleen? Is that it? All right, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Cam, Lloyd, let's move to your student report then, please.
Wait, one, do you know who Colleen user one is? Is it Melody? I just wanna note it if it is.
Oh. Who's online with CU?
That's also Colleen.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, okay, all right. And that's Bob Miller. So we don't have Melody at this time. Go ahead, Cam.
So just a brief report, 'cause you know, this semester just kinda started as well. But a plethora of events planned for the students. So on September twelfth here at North Campus and the Blenzer Hall Auditorium, the students were able to attend a financial literacy event through Arbo. If anybody's familiar, I know Eric, you're familiar with Arbo. But we had a guest speaker who works with Arbo, who's been with the company for a couple of years. James come in and explained the financial tool and the platform that students can use and also the resources that Arbo has. And the great thing about Arbo is a lot of the resources, our resources that are here at the college, like stuff that the college already uses. So students won't be unfamiliar, you know, it won't be like uncharted territory for them. So really good tool for students to get acquainted with. Still in the diaper stage, I guess, but you know, it's getting there. And on September twenty-fourth, City and North Campus hosted a back-to-school bash. Both had really good numbers from students, like really good, there are a lot of students. And the students loved the event. And South Campus is hosting theirs today later, I think at one. And then kicking off at the end of September thirtieth through October fifth, we have the, we call it the homecoming event week. So September thirtieth, we planned a Garfield Day. So students could just aspire to dress up as Garfield. Or if you don't wanna dress up as Garfield, you can dress up as SUNY Erie cat color. And then we also had like food and stuff, just a fun day for students to kinda hang out. And then also Tuesday, we have the women's volleyball game, which is gonna be our breast cancer awareness event. So we would love for you to come out and support October first at six P.M. at the Burt Athletic Center. And then October second, we also have PJ Day at all three campuses. So students are encouraged, um, get out of bed, obviously shower and put on your pajamas for the day. And then October third is Throwback Thursday, nineties theme. And October fourth is Friday Schools Color Day. And then Dr. Sagai had already mentioned the football game at Williamsville South. But we are doing Jersey Day for that and ECC swag. And then just, I could go on about the events we have for October, so. But, and then for, I guess for this week, I will be traveling to Saratoga Springs with the NYCCCT. I don't know if any other trustees or board members are going for the event, the gala or the ceremony on October fifth. So, but that's it.
Just a, thank you, Cam. Just, Gail, just a quick request. If it, if it's easy enough to do, could you send occasionally to the trustees a little rundown of when the various athletic events are? I, I feel like I'd like to drop by some and I don't have a good feel for how to obtain dates, times and places.
Okay.
That would be great.
There, oh, there is a flyer being made that is coming out for this. So we should, we'll have something out by the end of this week for you.
You just get something, I could get it into my Outlook and hopefully stop by. And thank you for your attendance at the conference and look forward to your report when you get back on that. Please take some good notes and, if you may, no. Those I believe are, are reports. However, I want to take care of a couple of lingering items from last meeting and our nomination. And then we'll get into the formal part of the approvals. So with regard to last meeting, I, I think I made a slip up and it was not intentional. During our executive session, we actually took a vote on two things. One, an amendment to the contract that we have with Dr. Sagai as our president. On a relatively minor matter, it's basically involved swapping out, providing Dr. Sagai with a driver, as was the language of the prior contract. And instead allowing her, as with past presidents, the use of a college-owned vehicle. After discussion and experience over the last year, year and a half, Dr. Sagai has concluded that the driver arrangement is somewhat uneconomical and unwieldy and cumbersome. And the, the car actually would be better and cheaper for the college and better for her. With that having been discussed both between Dr. Sagai and me and in executive session with the whole board, the board was comfortable doing that. And we did, we actually, we expressed that comfort. But now in public session, we need to take a motion to make that revision to Dr. Sagai's contract in the form presented last month. And so I'll take a motion to that effect, please. Thank you. Carrie, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Okay, that's formally approved as it was conceptually approved last month. Similarly, and very significantly, our lease at Fifty Cobham Drive, we talked great length about that in a number of prior meetings. And last August twenty-ninth, in executive session, we were presented with a form of lease in substantially final form and agreed unanimously that we were comfortable proceeding with that. However, I want to take now a full public vote on that step so that that is in our minutes and in our YouTube and so forth, in accordance with the public meetings law. So the motion requested here, please, is to approve as a board the entry by the college into a lease with the Crook organization in the form, substantially in form presented last month and approved last month conceptually. All, a motion to that effect?
So.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So that's formally adopted in public session now. The other item that was actually part of my report, but I wanted to tap Candace here to please take care of this for us. Len and you, I believe, have been working, wanna take over on the nomination piece?
Sure. So I've been, Len really was, was, took out the lion's share of it. But I was assisting Len with the ad hoc nomination committee. This is for the, the, the executive board of the Board of Trustees, or executive committee, rather. We have three, three positions and one, one trustee who's up for each position, largely a continuance from last year. So the nominations for officer for this year will be, Jeff Stone has, has, will be nominated for the role of chair. Melody Baker, who's not on, but in her continuing position as vice chair. And then Carrie Phillips continuing in her position as secretary. And those were unanimous nominations. So I propose a motion for the election of the slate of officers for our next two-year term.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. As part of our lease motion a minute ago, I think Dr. Sagai, you, we have some language here authorizing Dr. Sagai to begin the process of moving South Campus to this location. Now let's just formally move that part as well. Motion to authorize Dr. Sagai, second? Cam, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I look forward to a really fine couple of years coming up here as, as we hit our stride with the leadership team and round out the membership of the board to a full ten members. I'm looking forward to that. And the pieces are in place for that. And I think that the future is very bright. Thank you for your, for your confidence in that vote. Gail, I think I've covered the bases from last month.
Yeah.
And we've got our nominations. So I think now we're back with a full quorum present to handle our committee items for approval. And let's start with the motion to approve the board minutes from August twenty-ninth. I've reviewed them. I had no comments unless anyone else did. I'll take a, a motion, please. Carrie to approve? Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve the BOT minutes from August twenty-ninth is approved. Moving to committee items for approval, budget, audit and facilities, Chair Ken Crewley. I did have to miss that budget meeting. I was out of town. But I know you, you met and you do have one item for action, Cam.
Right, just a standard resolution reaffirming, in most cases, the rates that we pay people for contracted work, instructional work. Nothing unusual about the list or, or the amount set. So I, I move for approval of that.
This is an annual approval. It's summarized on page eight of our materials. I didn't have any issue with it, right? Any other comments? If not, a second then for Ken's motion? Thank you, Cam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried and that item A1 is approved. Curriculum, student success and diversity. We have our license agreement with Buffalo Bills for parking lot usage. Candace?
Yes, so we have one item received outside of the committee. As Jeff just mentioned, this is, I believe, an annual agreement as well. This renewal of a parking, a use of a parking lot. Before we take the vote, I'll just state on the record that I do have a conflict here. My firm represents, through the firm I'm employed by, represents Buffalo Bills. I don't know if you would like for me to recuse myself on this vote. It's a fairly, you know.
I can't because we, we only have six present. However, we'll note your comment for the record.
Sure.
And as a board, if, I don't have any, I don't see a conflict reference that makes that vote. This is an annual, relatively routine and highly positive vote, so non-controversial.
Okay, if there's no objection from the board, then, then I will join with the vote. But as we said, it's a, the information is in the board materials. It's an annual agreement for use of parking lots for, for classes of training purposes.
Essentially driving on large pieces of asphalt.
Yes. It's really just the large, you know, scope of parking lot.
And that is summarized on page twelve in our materials. Any further questions? If not, then please a motion to approve the renewal of the single-event license agreement with Buffalo Bills LLC.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Cam. Second?
Second.
All right. Ken, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Policy and governance, Melody Baker. Now Melody is not here, but we have quite a few items for actually to approve. And this made for interesting reading in the materials. I'll, I'll, I'll warmly group up to it and then we can all comment. The policies involve their camping and use of tents on campus, posting policy, freedom of expression and assembly, student policy and identification card policy. I think broadly speaking, these policies are coming to us from SUNY. There was a robust discussion, as I understand it, at the committee level, Dr. Sagai and Kathy can fill us in. And I read them all very carefully. I thought they were carefully worded and no doubt carefully vetted by lawyers. We all know that there are a number of, you know, things at any given time in our country's history involving protests, freedom of speech, activity and so forth. And having some sort of a roadmap in place for how to evaluate particular actions, trying to balance the rights of free speech versus the rights of a college and the need for a college to conduct itself in a businesslike way, conduct classes, carry on its activities. These, there is a balancing to be struck there, respecting the constitution and our very important fundamental rights. And I think from my perspective, SUNY has done a good job of attempting to balance those rights. A number of us are lawyers and all of us are citizens. So it'll be interesting to see what people think about this. But I thought it was very good reading. I did read it carefully. And I'm interested in hearing what the committee felt about this.
So there are four policies in front of you, camping and use of tents on campus. You will see a posting policy, which talks about posting of signage for student events or outside activities. A freedom of expression and assembly student policy, which is a revision to our previous policy. And then an identification card policy, which is a revision to a former policy whose name is reasonable request policy. So these four policies were given to the college in model language form from SUNY. They were, gone through their legal counsel. And then James, myself and Leslie worked on these to bring them to standards for the college. We also reviewed them in, in concept at, at senate. So the college community is aware of these policies. And we are requesting that they be approved today.
Kathy, at the senate level, were there any objections to any of the language?
None that we received, no.
Okay, other trustees, comments on these policies?
I have a question about the enforcement of the camping policy, particularly as it pertains to city campus. I know there's unfortunately been a lot of outdoor, unhoused peoples in that area.
In the proximity, yep.
In the proximities. So what have you talked about enforcement and balancing that and student safety?
I don't know, James, you're kind of over seeing security. Have, have you addressed that at all or has that come up?
Yeah, so I think with the passing hopefully of these, these policies, there'll inevitably be procedures that will work through. And we're already kind of in the formative stage for that. You're right, there is a balance certainly at city. You're right, there is a balance certainly at City, and that's going to have to, we're going to have to work on that, right, which is important.
And I think part of, part of this whole thing, policies, one thing, the procedure, obviously another, but I think for us, part of what we want to do is build relationship with our students and our student organization, to make sure that we have an open dialogue that they understand, and I have met with them last semester, and I, and I did meet with them this semester, I have two, you know, two other campuses to attend, to talk to them about their concern, whether it's related to things that are happening outside the college, or their perspective on how we could support them. So a lot of it, from last semester to now, it's been more about mental health support by a way of making sure that students' emotions are being addressed as it relates to what's happening in outside here, in terms of the social unrest that's happening in terms of our society, and knowing that our students have family members, you know, across the country and internationally, feeling that, you know, what can they do to help, and feeling helplessness. So it seems to be more of that for our students, and so I think it's a matter of us really being intentional. One of the things that came very clear was about culture-relevant counseling, so that they have individuals who are able to really understand the contents, and content in which they're coming from. So I think building that relationship had been very successful. In meeting with the chancellor and the governor as well, was talked a lot about how do the college community build stronger relationship with their student body. They did talk a lot about outside organization coming into the different campuses, perhaps trying to influence, but for us, I think we have that intimate relationship, as I believe it's really listening to our student body and paying attention, and also making sure that our faculty and staff are aware, so that we could address. But it appears to be our students are more wanting us to give them a lot of emotional support, but really relevant to their culture and their experiences, so that's been a lot of that. But I agree, I think the procedure is going to come along.
Yeah, I would also add that the procedure and request process, that it will be part of the freedom of expression and assembly student policy, allows us to enforce the camping intent policy. So they work in unison with each other.
Well, I think we all agree that America's colleges and universities are important principles for expression, debate of public issues, international, national, local. Every college and university will be different. Your comments about our students are well taken. I'm glad that we're being proactive here, and that SUNY is, as opposed to reactive. I remember the 60s, but every decade has controversies, and people wanting to express themselves, and one of the great strengths of the country is our ability to allow for that, but there also has to again be that balancing where you continue your operations and you can't have it be sabotaging the overall purpose of the organization. So SUNY, I think, made a very good faith effort to try to balance those competing concerns, and so I felt comfortable. Other trustees, do you mind this?
The policies themselves and the way that they're written seem sound to me, and I'm glad to hear that there, it seems like, especially when we went into this a little bit more the last meeting, that it will be implemented at the same time that we are working on our security issues, because how they're executed, I think, are, will be important.
Very good, yes.
So I work on these types of policies in my private life for other institutions, mainly private institutions. I think these are worded very appropriately. When you're drafting these kind of policies, you're trying to anticipate any ID, anything that could possibly potentially happen, and that's impossible to do, but I think the way that these are written are phrased appropriately, and I appreciate the policy committee for bringing us online with SUNY guidance and with Title VI.
Ken?
I'm the policy committee, so I sat through the last meeting, and I think they're all in tune with what's going on right now, and it's good to be proactive, and that's what we're doing here.
Okay. And Cam?
Just piggybacking off the other trustees, I think the policies make sense.
Just want to ask James, who's, you know, taken an active role on a lot of fronts here, helping Dr. Sagai and the team. To the extent you're wearing a security-related hat at the moment, or for this meeting anyway, do you have any concerns that we ought to bear in mind as we vote on this?
No, I think, you know, like you all mentioned, it came from SUNY, but it's through legal, it makes sense from a common security lens, and I talked to several people internally about it, to make sure my eyes were open to it, and I can't, I can't think of any reason to not.
Okay. And I think, like all our policies, these are living documents, right? If we see a reason to revisit, we will, we have a committee established for that, and we're capable of doing that. All right. Any further discussion before I propose a motion? Absent that, I'd ask for a motion, please, to approve the policy and governance agenda items number one through four, the camping, posting, freedom and identification outlined for us on pages 14 through 24 of our materials.
Salute.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All of those policies are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to our informational items, starting with the budget, audit and facilities committee, Chair Ken Crewley.
The first two items, the supplier report, facilities, renters and waivers, very short, nothing of particular interest, a handful of rental income items.
Ken, the only one that I'd maybe ask about, and I, again, wasn't at the meeting, but Cornell University dairy boot camp, I noted that was a $2,800 waiver, and I don't know if anyone at the meeting, that seems like an outside fee we could charge for, as opposed to a county partner or so forth. Was there any backstory on that?
I, I'm not familiar with it. Paul would be, he's not here right now, so, I mean, we can set that aside and bring it back if you have questions. I, I'm guessing that it's because there's another educational institution.
Dr. Sagai, you don't know anything about that?
We'll follow up and bring that up back.
It just, it just jumped up the page as a sizable waiver, and by an outside, non-year economy party, I thought, I wonder why we're not charging them, but go ahead, I'm content to leave that and let Dr. Sagai follow up.
The remaining four items, the LMHF financials, the healthcare program continuing to show a negative, that may work out a little better as the year goes on, but it seems to me we're so far in the negative that it's probably going to complete the year that way, because that's on a calendar basis rather than on a, on a school year basis. As far as the budget, Arda, why don't you just bring us up to date, because the dashboard is basically a full year of the last completed year.
That dashboard, it's also preliminary, just for your awareness, and it's subject to audit. Our auditors usually come in in November to do a thorough audit on our books, so the financial dashboard is not complete, there are still entries that are to be made, but overall, we're trending on a positive note. We've had one-time revenues that normally we would not, so overall, the performance is, we're doing well.
Arda, last meeting, you were talking about a payment from the county.
Yes.
Had to be to do with, he asked me, I believe, and the question was whether it would come in in June, July, or August, before the close of our fiscal year, or would it delay till September? What happened on that?
We have accrued that back to 8/31/24, however, the payment should be coming fairly soon.
Will that money then hit as part of our '23, '24 fiscal year, or will it be, it will?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Just one question going forward, what's the enrollment doing, what, where are we this semester?
Sure, we're going to have our final number, so in our next board meeting, we'll bring that data up, and Kathy and T will present.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And on the LMHF, I think the net effect there, Ken, will be that rates will be set in such a way as to deal with that deficit going forward, and have an impact on...
Right, yeah, it's just a function of the usage.
Right.
An experience-based basis for the most part.
My sense is, from meetings about this over the years, that we're still ahead in a self-insured sort of way here, but you're at risk as a self-insured entity for these kind of fluctuations. We do have stop loss, though, when it gets really bad, we have that covered, but we'll have year-to-year fluctuations. I know, I would note, last year we had a highly positive balance.
Yeah, one, one big case.
One big case, drugs.
Unfortunately, skewed the whole thing, so that's what happens.
Well, we monitor it every month, it's always in our materials, and we'll continue to do that. Thank you. As well as at the budget committee. And then the minutes are informational as well. All right, we'll accept all of those as filed with us. Thank you, Ken. Curriculum, success and diversity, I'm not sure there's anything going there. Marketing, Len is not here today. Is there any report to be given there while we have marketing in front of us?
No, I think we're moving forward a lot of the initiatives that Angelica is overseeing. I think, as you see, we're present in a lot of social media, immediately an event happens and we see it, and students are commenting, so I think it's important that we're present in everything, and so Angelica is building the team there appropriately to include our website. As you know, our website is the way to do things, and so she and the team are really working on updating that website on a regular basis.
Angelica, we're really glad to have you in the mix. You've made an impact already, I've seen you at all the events, Jane, same thing. I think it's busy building a very effective team here, and it's exciting that you guys are part of it. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
We have a, for Mel, policy and governance, there's a statement on those policies we just adopted, page 36. I think that's just a note essentially from the college and SUNY, as to what these are. We just finished a big discussion of these. Anything else from, information from your committee, Candace?
Candace just got...
Or, oh no, that was from Melody, pardon me. I think that's it, so we'll just take those as presented. Carrie, strategic planning, anything?
Nothing to report.
Informational? Talent, diversity, equity and belonging, Amanda?
I don't know.
Nothing informational?
We have nothing.
And technology, we're gearing up, I think, for a discussion of technology, if not this meeting, I know you, I think you meant September, I, my sense is that there's a technology-related report to the board coming up, having looked at our meeting from minutes from last meeting.
Yes, yeah, we need, we need to have a meeting, and then we can report on that in the next board meeting.
Just the whole workday implementation and so forth.
Yes.
Of interest. Okay, thank you for the informational items. We did our election, our general reports, our student, our Senate, our president report. Dr. Sagai, anything else that you want to add after having heard everything here?
No.
All right. Old business, transportation report and update, that's something we just want to keep in front of us.
We are doing the survey of our students, now that we have all the official numbers, so we'll include the transportation data.
I guess I did leave something out of the student trustee report, my birthday is at the end of October, so...
Birthdays are good, boy, but we'll have more information after the survey.
And those contracts that we're in with Cedar Bus and with NFTA have expiration dates, and they were mentioned in our materials, that one is in May of 2025, and like with Cedar Bus, NFTA might be a touch longer. I think the idea of this is to evaluate, are these contracts we still want to be in?
Right.
Not that we don't necessarily want to be in them, I just want that not to be a rubber stamp, let's just extend it unless we have a thoughtful assessment of what we're doing.
Or the other piece, it really is to optimize our contract, I think that's where...
Yes.
We have an opportunity that they have to do their part, we have to do our part. So I think there's an opportunity to optimize the existing contract.
That really is our time frame?
Yes.
Timeframe of this, because we've got these renewals, and I don't want to just do them out of habit, or sense that, well, that's what we always do.
Agreed.
And by optimize, you mean rewrite what the possibility?
So one of the things I know, I heard from the students, was that the shuttle was late multiple times. That cannot happen, and if, if, you know, things do happen, what is the procedure so that we notify the students because they're late to their class? So those things we could really address immediately, and have a plan both from a communication perspective, but that cannot be the way, that constantly the buses are late.
The state of the college was excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep that as an annual item, and thanks for, we can take that off, Gail, off our list until next August. Dr. Sagai, with respect to old business, what we did last month and just ratified today, the move of the South Campus over to Cobham Drive, is there anything you wish to say now about that, or what will be coming up with that?
Sure, I think to last, I believe, a Friday ago, that we met with the college community, last Friday? So we had an update to the college community, it was hosted, we hosted it at the South Campus, that was not just about the South Campus, but all facility-related concerns or updates, so we, we had that, we had about, it was around in the afternoon, we had an excellent turnout from faculty and staff questioning about the new space at South. Now, I just want to again note that we are waiting the approval of State Act, until we have an official approval of State Act. While we're talking about some of the things that we want to do, we still have to get an approval, so we're hoping to get that soon, so we could really move on. We also communicated to the college community that we are going to sign a contract with a third-party architecture to facilitate that group meeting about the input of faculty and staff and students, so we are in the, working in that to create some data and opportunity for faculty and students and staff to weigh in about what the South Campus new location will look like, so we're working on that.
Okay. Any other items of old business? Any items of new business? I'll just comment, I made this comment last meeting, but just to reiterate, with respect to the slate, again, thank you for the confidence, you know, on behalf of Carrie and Mel and myself. Our executive committee, I think it's been a little bit of an informal arrangement. We don't do very much in a small executive committee, but once in a while, it is convenient to have a subgroup of the board meet, and as far as I'm concerned, I viewed it as something that has some, some history involved, and also some preference for the current, by the current chair, how they want to do it, and that's free for future chairs to do as they wish. But for me, I viewed it as helpful to have the most immediate past chair who's still in the mix, whether that be Danise, or Len, or whatever it may be, if available. You don't always have a past chair who is no longer chair on the group, but we do. So I've had, along with Melody and Carrie, Len Lenahan participate there. Back in the day, when I was first the chair, his historical perspective of what has gone on was very helpful, and I've gained perspective as I've gone on, but I plan to do the same thing, subject to any comments or objections from the rest of the group. That will be our executive committee, and future chairs will structure that as they wish. Again, thank you, though, for the vote. I don't see any reason for an executive session, Dr. Sagai, do we have any reason?
No.
All right. Any comments from other trustees? Before we adjourn, our next meeting will be on Halloween, we'll all be here in full costume. 9:00 AM at North.
Keep them ideas now, Jeff, they're all going to wear that.
Absent any further comments, I'll take a meeting, a resolution, please, to adjourn this meeting of the board.
Salute.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.